... rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all for coming this evening. I've not heard from Kyle, we did hear from Jennifer, she's tied up in Augusta. And will not be able to make it this evening. Really, only comments I had, and it's something that we're going to be talking about under new business, is this discussion about a move towards, looking at, a move towards a K through five school like I know on the traditional. I know that it's been something that the board has been discussing for a period of time, I think, and we'll get a sense of how the board feels as we move forward, but I would ask that if there's anyone out in the public who can share with us any history about why the schools moved towards the current model of K through two and three through five, any of that background history would be helpful as we begin those discussions. We'll move on to item 4.0, approve and amend minutes of February 24th. Pull out, you should have had minutes in your packet, take a look at those, is there a motion?
Vote for approve.
Vote for approve.
Seconded.
Seconded by Allen. Any changes? Any comments? All right, I had two, I just want to make sure that, Vida, that, where is Vida? Okay, that it says in the minutes, a copy of the state of the district presentation will be attached to the official board minutes, make sure that makes it, okay? And then, just one change on page five, the first sentence of the technology piece, says Technology Director Dean Emerson Dean reviewed the technology, I think we can eliminate the small Dean and just leave the large Dean. You all right with those amendments? Any others, any other changes? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve with the two changes, raise your hand. None opposed? That passes. All right, item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. Patrick, did you have any?
Just one out of state, one out of state field trip from Pittsburgh, that you have a hard copy here tonight.
Anyone else have any adjustments to the agenda? Just remind me about that. So that would be 11.35. Okay, item 6.0, public comment session. Jennifer, you made it.
I did.
I just got done saying you weren't going to make it, you make a liar out of me.
So sorry, I didn't send you a message, I was fine when I found out, I'd just like to let me go.
Glad you could be here.
Yes, sorry.
Public comment session, is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, no one from the public? We'll move on to staff reports. And we have one staff report, item 7.1, the flow expedition, and that's being presented by Lawrence Kovacs, and I'll turn it over to Patrick.
Lawrence, would it be better for us to move out there, or you think?
Well, it's a little tough up there. All right, so maybe if the board can move, or swing your cares around so you can view.
That must be why, over the seats, you better zoom.
That's right.
So, so just quickly, Lawrence is here to, as we went through the budget process this year, so far, this is the eighth grade experiential-based program that Lawrence has been working with Chonki on, as well as local businesses, so he wanted to give you a kind of a brief overview of it tonight, and let you know where we are with the financial aspect of it as well.
Thank you, Patrick. I'll introduce myself briefly, and let Greg introduce himself, my name's Lawrence Kovacs, I've been a teacher in the area since 2003, taught elementary school in Georgetown, fifth grade here for a year, and I'm now one of the gifted and talented teachers for the district, and this is Greg Schute, works for Chonki.
Hi, thanks for having us tonight, I'm Greg Schute, I direct the outdoor programs at Chonki, and filling in tonight for Andy Bezon, who's our director of outdoor classroom program, who just found out he's about to have a baby, so at the last minute, I get the call, but I've worked at Chonki for 30 years and familiar with this program.
And just to clarify, he's not the one having the baby. So, Patrick, thank you very much for your support, I went to an expeditionary learning conference last year and came back sort of on fire, that I really want to get kids outside. A little bit about my background, I worked for Outward Bound before I was a public school teacher out in Washington State, and have seen firsthand what time in a new context, time in nature, time working together can do for people, can teach them about how to be the best they can be, and show them that they're capable of more than they thought they ever were, so, I got in contact with Chonki, and we started talking, and we've done a fair amount of work thinking about how we could get that experience for the entire district, and we've settled on grade eight, and I will show you my presentation, it's going to be a little bit washed out in the light, but I'll try and speak over it. So what are we proposing? It's a week-long canoe trip through the, through Hockamont Bay and Monswede, Brookings, Brookings Bay, which is about, oh, I don't know, four miles that way. It's a collaboration between RSC One and Chonki Foundation. So this is the course area, and Greg, if your thing works.
That's Chonki neck right there, where we're based, and the new trips would be going down Monswede, Nubble Bay, to Hockamont Bay, a little bit into Nubble Bay, we own several islands right down here in the Els Gate area and Hockamont Bay, Castle Island, Berry Island, we have access to another Berry Island, and also access to Oak Island, and Beal Island, which is the AMC Island right down here, so it's an area that we do, that's the very tip of Chonki neck up there, and this is an area that we do a variety of different canoe and sea kayak trips, as well as sailing opportunities for kids throughout, throughout the summer, as well as into the fall.
And for scale, are we somewhere down, I'm not sure where we are, right around there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the objectives are, academic objective is to focus on writing, that's an area that, you know, we've identified as something that really needs to be focused on, if you look at data, that's where our kids need the most help. It'll foster a culture of grit and grappling, grit's a big word these days, but it will teach perseverance, it'll teach people that, like I said, they're capable of more than they assumed they were. Strengthening relationships is a big part of it among kids, and specifically creating relationships between kids who are in Woolwich and kids who are in BMS, many of them don't know each other, and they show up on day one at Morse, and they have to get to know each other right then and there, having a common experience, I think, would do a lot to empower them to, you know, be happy to talk to each other, help each other, sort of shift the power balance to themselves, so that they could help each other. And also, sort of recognizing where we live, many kids have no idea how amazing Maine is, I've shared with Patrick, I come in the woods all the time, I ride my bike a lot, and there's one spot that I come to every year that has 150 beer cans, Labatt Blue, and buy a fire ring, up in the woods behind Hyde School, and me and my buddy pack it up and take it out, and the next year we go back, and beer cans are there again, so one thing that I think would happen would be the kids who participate in something like this might be better stewards of this place, and might think that that's not a great idea, a great use of the, of the land resource that we have. So the meaning of flow is to move smoothly, that's the Merriam-Webster dictionary version, but that's not why I picked that name, the acronym, I'll tell you what it stands for in a sec, is based more on this guy, and I'm not going to try and say his name, he's a Hungarian psychologist, he calls flow the state in which people are so involved in an activity that nothing else seems to matter, so, when you are in a context where you are, you know, focused on something simple like staying warm and dry, or cooking food for yourself, or navigating, you're so focused you might lose sense of the rest of the world, and specifically problems and things, and clicks and stressors that otherwise would be occupying your mind. So flow stands for, oh, and by the way, all the pictures you see here, they're all from the course area, these are all courtesy of Chonki, fundamental, learning, water. So for those not familiar with the EL design principles, I put them up here, expeditionary learning grew out of Outward Bound, and they basically took what happens on an Outward Bound course, but is anybody not familiar with Outward Bound? Okay, so they took what happens on an Outward Bound course and tried to apply it to the classroom, so, here are the principles that go into designing EL curricula, primacy of self-discovery, having ideas, taking responsibility for your own learning, empathy and caring, success and failure, collaboration and competition, diversity and inclusion, the natural world, solitude and reflection, and right now, I'd say we do a really good job at BMS in a number of these areas, I think we could definitely beef up on this one, and that, the seventh graders do go on a trip now to Ferry Beach, which is a really great stepping stone for an experience like this, Ferry Beach, they sleep in cabins, not in tents, I don't think they cook for themselves, this is definitely a step up in responsibility and commitment. So this could be tied to anything, obviously, I mean, there's a lot going on out there, we could be studying science, we could be studying math, we could be studying art, music, but the focus is really going to be on writing. I put up here the Common Core standards for writing, there's argumentative writing, there's informational writing, and there's narrative writing, and I can guarantee kids will have a lot of material after spending a week on canoes out there, many things they want to write about, and in fact, I work with eighth graders, and when I give them the chance to write about whatever they want, they often will pick an experience like being in the woods alone, seeing a sunrise, and that's not, that's not coming from me, this is stuff that they remember from their lives, so I think they have a lot of material, and Greg, I will turn it over to you, and I'm going to turn that speaker away from you.
So just very briefly, we, we have numbers of groups out in this area regularly with schools that we work with, and it's just a, you know, an idea of what a schedule might look like for an individual group, I think the, you know, oops, we have a full-time nurse on the staff, all of the people who would actually be leading the trips are certified main state trip leaders, they've gone through a variety of 72-hour backcountry medicine course, we run trips locally, we run them as far afield as the Eastern Arctic and the subtropics, you know, we've been doing this for a really long time, and we work really closely with the school to tailor to the needs of each one of the students that we work with, we're really used to dealing with all sorts of different food allergies and food concerns and health concerns, we try to use a lot of local foods, some from our own farm, and this is the gear that we provide, we provide all the group camping equipment, we provide waterproof river bags, if there's a hardship where somebody can't find a sleeping bag or a sleeping pad, we can provide all of that, so really, the individual student just needs to bring their, their personal clothing, and, you know, to be out in September, it's probably one of the best times to be out, the temperatures are generally mild, the water temperature is still warm, so in terms of any kind of extra special clothing other than a raincoat and, you know, just clothes that you can be comfortable with while you're paddling, there's not a whole lot of special concern there. We definitely practice leave no trace on the islands, a couple of the islands are, we allow the main island trail to use as well, and we have on-call administrators, each one of the groups has communication with us back at our main base, either through cellphone or VHF radio, we have a number of different boats at our waterfront that in the event that somebody needed assistance, we can be out to them in about 10 minutes, and I think the, the one thing that, and then our staff is trained, they do this professionally year-round, there's a general staff training, we do a specific saltwater canoe staff training in the area that we'd be paddling in, I mentioned the Wilderness First Responder, that's a 72-hour backcountry medicine course that all the staff are certified in, and then they all have lifeguard certification as well, and I think the one, one other key thing for me is, my son went through a very similar experience, he's kind of come up through the ranks at Chonki, he went to Whiskass at high school, and I see in the kids that he went to school with, so many of them, being described just as Lawrence has, that they don't even have a clue of what's right around them in the local area, and my son's been pretty fortunate, he's done a lot of trips through Chonki, but working with his eighth grade class when they came was something that he actually ended up writing his college essay on, you know, because it really, it took that opportunity to work with kids that he'd been with since, since day one, in many instances, and he saw them in a different light, and it brought out some leadership in him that, it wouldn't have come out had he been outside with, with my wife or I, you know, it only came out in the course of being with, in the context of his kids in the school, so, I know that it is a significant amount of money, but I just see kids throughout the mid-coast as really missing these kind of opportunities, and they're incredibly powerful from a, from a, just a personal growth standpoint, so, thank you very much.
So logistically, how it will work, I thought about this a lot, we've talked about this a lot, BMS has crew groups, that's part of the EL school design, these are kids who are not in the same homeroom necessarily, but they're all the same grade level, and it's a group that gets together every Wednesday, they spend about an hour, exactly an hour, talking about everything from relationships to dealing with academic stress, to critical thinking, problem solving, they do activities, they help shovel dirt, a few crews helped shovel dirt into the greenhouse for me this fall, but they're a group that gets together and does stuff that's less schooly, they're not just sitting and listening, they're doing unusual things, so we're going to send out crew groups, each crew group is about 10 kids, so the plan is to keep the crew groups from BMS intact, and then sprinkle in Woolwich kids to each of those crews, so we will have about 45 kids max out of the time in three groups. The entire eighth grade, assuming we don't get some terrible hurricane, should be able to finish this trip by about the first week of October, we'll run three consecutive weeks. Like I said, or like Greg was saying, Chonki will provide all the group gear, journals, people to lead the trip. This is sort of a serendipitous perfect storm, we used to have to take the kneecap test in the fall, that has changed, we're now switching over to the smarter balance, which will happen in the spring, so that was a very, that was a non-negotiable situation, that happened, and kids needed to be there, that's changed, and that's opened up the fall, to do this trip in the spring would be stupid, because people could freeze and die, the water is still really cold into the spring, fall, as you know, is an amazing time of year in Maine, no bugs, or a few bugs, water's still warm, you get days like this, colors like that, so that just sort of worked out. Those are kids, this, I mean, and Chonki does have a history with BMS, BMS for years did programs with Chonki, and this is from sometime in the past, you can see the BMS sweatshirt, okay, what's it going to cost? So, normally, this trip for five days would be $418 per kid, which is a good deal on its own, I remember back in the 90s when I was working for Outward Bound, we, it was usually about a hundred bucks a day per kid, so, for 160 kids, the cost would normally be $66,000, $66,880. Chonki is reaching out to local schools, they, I don't know if you want to speak to this?
Yeah, we just have, we have a three-person program that we're looking at right now to really look at the schools within the Dammer Scott, if sheeps get Kennebec watersheds, to really reach out to them and work with them in ways that we're not currently, if we're not, and so, that's part of the subsidizing that we are committed to doing for schools within our watershed.
So, and you do have schools that come from, say, North Carolina, Pennsylvania, so they would be paying the full price, and they'd have to pay to get here, so, just put that in your minds, so the discounted cost for the trip with Chonki's subsidization is $44,586.67. We think it's important to ask each kid to commit to paying a hundred dollars, Patrick helped come up with that number, definitely not unattainable, there's some kids who'll have a hard time getting that, but we think it'll create a lot of buy-in, and kids will take some ownership in this trip, also gives us the opportunity to talk to kids about how to interact with the community, how to make money, how to budget, how to save money, how to be respectful when you're asking to shovel somebody's sidewalk or mow their lawn. We have asked for RSC One to allocate $15,000 in the budget, Patrick and I reached out to First Federal and BUD savings, and they have each committed to $10,000 combined, which they committed to as a recurring annual grant, they both, we talked with Barbara Goll and Andrew Perry, they both really were excited by the idea, and so, we feel very fortunate that they, they stepped up to help us. So, these are not my words, this is the words that Willard Morgan wrote to me the other day, "A trip like this is a catalyst for good amidst many challenges." This is not just a canoe trip, I think something like this could really be life-changing for some of the kids who participate, and I think it would really be sort of a windmill effect, and could do a lot to transform, transform our community. Who's going to go? Interested eighth graders, obviously, we can't force anybody to go, I've worked with about 200 kids per week, and I've just been sort of tossing it out there, you know, what do you think of a canoe trip? And most kids say, "Oh, I get to not be in school, but go to school, it's great," so kids seem very psyched, they did all freak out when I said they wouldn't get to choose their groups, there were also some bathroom fear issues, but we, I think we've got that totally dialed, we have sort of a clamping porta potty situation worked out that will erase that issue. One eighth grade teacher, or chaperone per group, we don't want to just open this up and say, "Hey, anybody wants to go canoeing, join your kids," we'll have one adult from the community joining the two trip leaders. So, close this by saying, partnering with Chonki and local businesses, every student in RSC One will have a powerful wilderness experience that will enhance their learning, build their self-confidence, broaden their horizons, and create strong bonds between classmates, we'll go a long way, I think, to building community. And that's it. Anybody have any questions? Do you want to?
The board should move back up here, just so that when we're talking, it's getting recorded on the camera, but if you have any questions, we'll know as well.
I'm going to start out, I have a couple of questions, and then I'll point out to some board members, I really have two questions, with the five-day trip that you're talking about, would that, all five days, would that occur during the week, or would it encompass a weekend?
It would not encompass a weekend, day one would be Monday, and that would happen on Chonki neck, and that would be sort of a skills day, transferring clothing and equipment from personal gear, from a suitcase or duffel bag to a dry bag that Chonki has, basic, I'm guessing, basic canoe skills, paddle strokes, T rescue, you know, starting to think about how to stay warm, how to stay dry, then day two, paddling to an island, setting up a base camp on said island, day three, day four would be on that base camp island, day five, pack up base camp, back to Chonki, have a great big, have a small debrief in small crew groups, and then a larger debrief with the whole group, and Friday afternoon, adios, and then Monday morning, we start again.
And talk to me a little bit about how you envision having the discussion, trying to coordinate with both schools, who might be on a little bit of different academic schedules, and with BMS being, you know, having two separate houses, getting that buy-in from staff and administration to say, you know, you're going to lose 45 this week, and then 45 the next week, and 45 the next week, but at the end of the month, we all want to still be on the same page academically, how are you going to accomplish that, and also, will it have any impact on athletics, or athletics, you know, with practices and that sort of thing, games, or, probably wouldn't be anything that early in the month, but later on in September, you might have it.
No, those are great questions, so, in full disclosure, this is not the first time I've given this presentation, I first went to Bud at BMS, and to Tom, and said, "I have this idea," and so I presented this to the joint SAG committees for both schools, for Woolwich and BMS, I also reached out to Dane Dwyer, who's the athletic director for the middle school, and have received enthusiastic support from both the SAG committee and from Dane, Dane basically said, you know, "This sounds so great, we will make it work, don't not do it because of sports," and I also had to present to the faculty, the BMS faculty, and say, you know, "If you guys don't want to do this, let me know now, before we move forward," they're very excited too, they, some of them are especially excited that they didn't have to go on the trip, others were really excited that they got to go on the trip, you know, I have some faculty at BMS who have already signed up for all three weeks, the beginning of the school year is very much about remembering, remembering procedures, and sort of reminding yourself what school is like, and so in a lot of ways, that time of year really lends itself to kids, maybe working independently, and having sort of, you know, there are lots of ways to model it pedagogically, but everyone who I've spoken to is pretty confident that that can happen, you know, there might be a set number of tasks that kids can do independently for two weeks, and then when they're out on the trip, they're doing the trip. two weeks, and then when they're out on the trip, they're doing the trip. And when they come back, they're working on the independent tasks. But since everybody will be experiencing it, and since it will go by crew groups, nobody is going to miss any more than anyone else. Nobody's gonna get any more than anybody else. But it's something that we're thinking about a lot. And, you know, if you know Bud Salabello, this is not gonna happen unless it is absolutely watertight. He is a very detail-oriented administrator, and so we've been thinking about it a lot. And he likes the idea.
Great. Any other questions from the board? Jennifer?
Hi, Larry.
Good, how you doing?
See you again. I think this is kind of a great program. I worked, I'm so sorry. I worked at Chonki. I live at the end of Fifth Point Road, so I, the place that we're doing, I think is great, and the process is great. Could you talk just a little bit to, you know, from the Woolwich standpoint, we have a fifth-grade program at Chonki, so we've got a connection, the kids have a connection with that. Myself and two other sixth-grade teachers got together and designed our sixth-grade Mount Blue program that goes on and introduces kids to the natural sciences and the waters and that all-facal process. And they have the, you know, the fourth-grade touch tank, which says, "This is how your marine world exists around where you live." Are there ways to kind of tie in all of that experience to either prepare or to kind of start those objectives starting early that you could kind of make that, you know, even a more specific experience for some of the kids, or how can you do that?
That's a great point, and that's something we talk about a lot at all the schools I work at. Sort of creating a common language and a common vocabulary. If this were to happen, I think, you know, I think if we build it, they will come. I think that sort of thing will happen. We can try and front-load it some, but I think, you know, we are a school district of sort of a wide variety of school experiences. And there's a touch tank now at Fisher Mitchell. There was a touch tank at Pittsburgh. I don't know if there is right now. You have a touch tank. Oh, you have Pittsburgh. Something, you know. Appreciating this place and sort of having a sense of this is really important. I have not been as successful having conversations with the staff at Woolwich. I've tried, but like you said, we're on different schedules, and I don't have as much of a presence at Woolwich. So I have not actually sat face-to-face and talked about it and shared emails, but I think that's a really important point, you know. And I want to piggyback on that for a second because I know that Woolwich goes to DC. And for the kids at BMS, there's the Freedom Tour. Both are really cool trips. The Freedom Tour, though, is really expensive and typically has, I think they cap it at around 40 kids. Is that right? So how many kids are, are there per grade at BMS? Hundred and...
About between 100 and 150.
So, you know, in a normal year, there are 100 kids not going on the Freedom Tour. Freedom Tour's great, but it's exclusive. And part of my inspiration in this is making sure that every single person in the district, every kid, has a chance to do something like this. And that is not to disparage the Freedom Tour at all. It's just a different thing. So I don't know if I answered your question at all, but I talked for a while.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead. Can you take the microphone?
If a student can't raise the $100, will they be excluded from this?
Great point. No, that is something that we're trying to build into the money that we're asking for. I'm actively seeking, so right now, if this were to be approved, we'd be about $6,000 short. I have reached out to the Nature Conservancy, to KELT. We're in conversation, so I can't say if anything's going to happen, but my gut is we will get what we're asking for. And part of my budgeting was to create a scholarship fund so that kids can find a way to get that money. Could be community service. Like, nobody's gonna get to go for free. Nobody's gonna say, "Oh, I can't raise a dime," because everybody can. So for those kids who really can't part with $100, maybe they're doing some painting around the school. Maybe they're helping water the greenhouse. Some form of community service. So there's a connect between putting forth an effort and getting to have this opportunity and this experience. But no, nobody will be denied for not coming up with a full amount.
Any other, Stephen?
You mentioned, Larry, that you've talked to faculty at both schools. Could you just talk a little bit more about how these experience, the experiences on this, with this activity are gonna be integrated back into the, I'll call it, regular school career?
It sort of already happens with crew at BMS. Those kids, and, you know, probably Jenny, you can speak to that, too. But, you know, when kids are taken out of the context of the normal classroom and asked to think about life and think about who they are, what makes them tick, what they want to do, what they don't like doing, and talking about that, having conversations, and sort of building relationships with their peers, that's drawn on every day at BMS. I, you know, I know that kids who are in the same crew, who might not be in the same homeroom, there's a lot of caretaking. People will reach out, kids will reach out to each other, "You're doing okay." They will do stuff after school together, relationships are built. And so an experience like this, I think, takes it to a whole other level. When you are working together to stay warm, figure out how to set up a tent, you know, helping each other cook, being away from home, you know, sleeping on an island, you know, most kids, when they go to, many kids, when they go to Ferry Beach, that's their first time away from home as seventh graders. So this is sort of amplifying that experience. And personal relationships and self-knowledge go a long way to helping kids become better people and be more successful in whatever it is they're doing. So when I've talked with the faculty, I think they all see that value. And, you know, there are faculty from BMS who are not the outdoorsy type at all, go to Ferry Beach, and they come back saying, "That was okay. That was pretty good." And they get to see their kids in a different environment, and they think it's very valuable and worthwhile. So they felt like this was a great step and a great progression.
And I think going forward, there's all sorts of different applications and more into the academic world as well. You know, not within this first year, but there's so many applications of the navigation piece that tie with math curriculum. There's a lot of science that could be done on the trips, you know, in future years to do some ecological monitoring that then there's some information that can go back to the school that can be worked with in a science class. You know, the writing connections are the easiest ones in some ways, but there's a lot of other places to make connections over time as well.
Any other questions? Bill?
Not a question, Mr. Chairman, but I want to express my gratitude to you, Mr. Kovacs, for the extra effort and enthusiasm that you're putting into this project. Hurricane Island graduate, the first year it was open. And I coordinated the Outward Bound experience and Homeward Bound experience for the Massachusetts Department of Youth Services for seven years. So I'm really sold on the whole concept and even just, you know, they're just putting their toes in a little bit in five days, but it's really a worthwhile experience, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
I trust that your supervisory ratio, you said there'll be two Chonki staff and one chaperone.
Yeah.
Forty-five kids, is that a good...
It's actually broken down into the smaller group. So we have two staff for each, well, there are state regulations that you must maintain a ratio of at least one to six, one certified mainstay trip leader, which our staff are, and you have to have at least two adults with each group. So we'll have a ratio of, well, really, three adults to 10 kids.
So it's not three to 45?
No. That 45, yeah, I was not clear. I was probably speaking quickly, but anyway, that 45 is getting broken into thirds. So that, and that's really the maximum number. Really, it's gonna be closer probably to 30 kids. And so one group of 10 is on one island, one group of 10's on another island, another group of 10's on another island. Each of those groups has two trip leaders and a community member.
Anyone else?
Billy, 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 the captain.
Okay. Thank you so much for presenting. We look forward to hearing more about this. Again, I'm gonna kind of put in similar pitch to Bill. I was talking with Eric Barney the other day, who was head of the Science Department at Morse High School, and we were kicking around some ideas about trying to develop some kind of a maritime curriculum or maritime influence to not only science, but other aspects of, you know, what we do at Morse. Taking advantage of, as you said, the resources that are around us that other areas don't have. For me, four years of college, my biggest experience, I was a, I went, I did the Williams Mystic Program. Eric, his biggest influence was the Sea Semester Program, a very similar program. So, you know, I wish you good luck, and I think you will have success if you really can, along with the literacy piece, somehow integrate the science, the maths, and history that somehow ties into maybe the expedition that's going on at BMS or some other work that they're doing at Woolwich. So good luck with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks again. We'll move on to committee reports. We'll begin item 8.1, Facilities Committee Report, and I'll turn that over to Bill.
Well, you must forgive me, Mr. Chairman, but I didn't make the last meeting of the Facilities Committee, so I only got a report from Patrick, and I would ask Patrick perhaps just to review what occurred at the Facilities Committee. The roadshow is in preparation, that's one thing that I do know.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about having two ad-hoc committees formed and the Facilities Committee. One for the elementary grades, which really is just the start. We have a representative from each of our communities, with the exception of Erasik right now, that are basically starting to, I guess I'd say, look at and explore the harem report that was done, that was basically a space utilization study of all the elementary schools. So it's really to get some more people on board to be able to explore that report, and then possibly with a timeframe of going out and trying to get some, you know, share that report and getting some input from the communities on that report. And then we also have a small group. I think we have three, three or four people right now that have agreed to be part of the Morse Committee, ad-hoc committee, so I'm still looking for probably, you know, maybe two more people, community members, that would be part of that. And we do have, I think we've taken it down, but on our website, we did have a kind of a, not a job description, but kind of a small cup of bullets for what the elementary committee was kind of charged with and then what Morse was charged with. So with the Morse one as an example, it's more to talk about, you know, kind of maybe predict what we might hear from the state, but also in the meantime, we can start talking about renovation versus building new. We can talk about potential sites. We can do some of that legwork. It wouldn't be something where this committee, as an example, would be choosing an architect. That would be, you know, a totally different committee, but it's something that we can get going and try to involve the communities more before we move in that direction at the high school level. So that's, you know, where we're at right now.
The April meeting is on the 8th.
Any questions for Bill or Patrick on what's happening with facilities?
I just want to emphasize, follow up to what you just said, Patrick. I think it's important that the Facilities Committee, with those two subcommittees, that those two subcommittees get in writing what the goals are and the objectives for that group, so they know what they're charged with and what their responsibilities are. I think that will go a long way towards guiding them and not letting them kind of go in a direction that we hadn't necessarily attended with the subcommittee.
And then I have one other question for Patrick. I know that we had hired harem associates, or we had chosen harem associates. Where are we in terms of the negotiation on their fee?
Right now, we have, I just emailed our attorney today. We typically have, our attorneys look over a proposal agreement that would come in. So harem has submitted something. We asked them to change a few things, use a different format, and I think at the end of last week, our attorney and harem were, you know, 99% on the same page, and, but I didn't get an answer today, but we should have that. We were comfortable with everything in it for the most part, the proposal, and a little bit that's slowed it up is, you know, the bond piece, and we'll, you know, touch on tonight as well. So we, you know, took us a little longer to get that solidified because of that other issue.
Would it be possible for the rest of the board to see the cost of that before we sign off on that?
Yeah, I can share it as an info. I can send it out to tomorrow. Hopefully by noon, so I'm gonna get an answer from our attorney. So...
Okay. I'd just like to see what that number is and maybe get some feedback from the rest of the board. Any other questions for facilities?
I think we have a new maintenance issue, which is blinking lights.
You're on the motion sensor, you're not moving.
We're not moving enough. We have to get up and scratch.
You're gonna have to mount this and then go and submit a proposal.
Yeah, I'll submit a thing.
When we hired you, we didn't tell you about the ghost.
Okay. Item 8.2, Finance Committee Report. I'll turn that over to Steve.
Thanks, Steve. The Finance Committee met three times this month, in the month of March, and will be meeting again. I'll just, I'll get it out ahead of time. We'll be meeting again this Thursday at eight o'clock to, again, to continue our discussions on the budget and to talk a little bit about the bond, bond issues. We met March 3rd to 10th with Patrick and the administrative team and several board members, and our community members participated in those meetings. They involve, those of you who've been there before know that they involve the administrators coming in, discussing their budget proposals and answering questions that the committee might have at that time. And I do appreciate the time and effort that went in to tuning those proposals and thank Patrick and the administrative team for putting that together. Budget as it was presented to us... Is the budget up on the website?
Not yet, because we haven't, I mean, so as soon as we kind of met Thursday, our plan was to put that up there so that people would have access to that before April 7th on the forum.
Okay. Essentially, the proposals as they came in represent overall about a 4.1% increase over, year-to-year increase over last year. Last year's budget was about $27, $27,700. This year's recommendation to the board is about $28,800,000. Again, that represents about a 4.1% increase. In terms of local contribution, the increase is about 6.3%. As we sat through those, through those presentations, we, I think the committee pushed back fairly, well, we pushed back and asked for Patrick and the team to come back to us with a set of, a second iteration of some of those recommendations that would reduce costs to some extent. And they did that, and we looked at those at our meeting, which was last week. I don't know exactly, I can't remember the dates, but, March 17th we met. The second iteration of the budget looks at a year-to-year increase of about 2.5% and the local contribution would be in the neighborhood of 4% to 4.5%. We just began, the committee just began to discuss some of those recommendations and had some additional questions. So part of the meeting that will, part of the agenda for the meeting on Thursday will be to continue... for the meeting on Thursday will be to continue the discussion of that, of those budget recommendations. We think, we think that, you know, some of the, some of the proposed reductions are certainly something that we need to consider, to keep our overall increase in a, in a range that we feel both produces a responsible budget, and yet is sensitive and responsible to the taxpayer, so it's a, it's that typical fine line. I just, just in terms of detail, just to say again, you know, largely, the increases are largely in personnel areas, salary, our health benefits are up about eleven percent this year, we're looking at a significant increase in our special education costs, again, some of that is our positions, and some of it is just increased utilization, increased, increased number of kids that are, that are sent to special services. Energy costs are, as I think as no one's surprised, so again, we're looking at higher energy costs. I don't know if you want me to go into any more detail at this point, or are you gonna...
I don't think you need to, as you know, we're going to be doing the first reading of the budget, so we'll get a detailed presentation of that by Patrick, and there'll be an opportunity to ask questions specific to the budget. That said, are there any questions for Steve on the last couple of Finance Committee meetings we've had?
I should tell you also that part of our agenda, the last meeting, was to deal with those, with some bond issues, on how we allow it, and secure financing, are you gonna touch on that?
Patrick's.
Touch on that later.
Yeah.
So those were the two agenda items that we've, we've been focused on, and again, there's a meeting scheduled for, for this Thursday at eight o'clock, and as, as always, we invite all, all members of the board to attend.
And we do get to the first reading of the budget, not that we have a lot of people in the audience tonight, but, you know, the first, we're in the, I mean, a budget is always, I guess I would say, ongoing, until it becomes the board's, and the board adopts it, I mean, it's a fluid process. And so tonight, we did talk about, you know, doing a PowerPoint for you, and we decided not to, I mean, the PowerPoint, the general PowerPoint is on our website, so when we get to that agenda item, we're really just gonna talk about the process that we've gone through so far, because it's not carved and sewn, I mean, Steve mentioned some percentages tonight, but there's still some things in flux, you know, that we're, again, it's a fluid process, so we'll talk about the process, and, you know, mention those numbers again, and then on April seventh will be our public forum, and before that, we will make sure that all board members, and on our website, exactly what our budget looks like, so that when people come on April seventh, you know, all our administrators will be present, and be able to answer specific questions that you might have, so. On the, on the bond, just quickly, as you know, the voters in the district approved spending up to five point two million dollars for a bond for renovations and improvements to our schools. Wanted to let you know that, give you an update on where we are in the process of, we are in the process of adjusting the financing, the way that we're financing this bond, so it doesn't change, it's up to five point two million. But our financial advisor feels it's better to begin with a short-term bond anticipation note, for a period of up to three years, and then issue a bond after that, and really for two reasons. The first one is because of pending litigation that the district has, and then the second one is really because our bond counsel, which is Drummond and Woodson, weighed in that the payments of this bond need to be paid back in equal installments, which required our financial advisor to go back and tweak the payment schedule. So it still will enable us, as an RSU, to issue debt, and it will work well with our retiring debt, but we've had to go back over the last week or two, and kind of make some adjustments to that. So Dick Renigan, who was our financial advisor, came to the Finance Committee last Thursday, and he also will be coming back this Thursday to provide, you know, a schedule that will work well for the district, and also talk a little bit more about the bond anticipation note for up to three years. So, just wanted to give you that update, so our Finance Committee meetings have been, you know, half on budget, and then last week was half on the bond, and it probably will be, maybe not that way this week, but Dick will come back this Tuesday, I mean, this Thursday coming up.
Are there any questions for Patrick or Steve on either of those two issues? Okay, I think it's important to note, and again, I had requested a document from Dick Renigan, to explain why the change was made, from what we had initially proposed, of how we were going to pay back the bond, to what we're looking at now. That document will be, you should have all received that, as an email, and it will be part of the minutes. Essentially, there was an oversight on his part, that if, if a municipality, or a school district that is only a municipality, goes out to bond, they have the flexibility to set up the repayments structure. But under state statute, if you're an RSU or an SAD, you need to pay back in equal terms, or equal amounts, equal principal amounts. So, a way to accommodate us offsetting retired financing with this new financing, part of that would be getting this bond in anticipation note, to buy us a couple of years until we've retired some additional debt, and then to be able to pay that back. Again, Dick has supplied you with a document?
At this point right now, it's going out to the Finance Committee, and then after I sent it to the Finance Committee this morning, I noticed a few things that I wanted to ask and questions on, so it will go out to the full board, I would think, tomorrow morning.
Okay.
It's gonna give, really, it's providing a timeline of what, you know, what occurred, and then also kind of explaining what the option that we're recommending at this point.
Jennifer?
Once we get that document, does it become a document that the selectmen, the individual towns look at as well, I mean, does this change from them, any kind of budgeting that they were looking at in terms of dollar amounts, budgeting, timeframe, nothing?
No.
I don't know how this process works, so.
Yeah, it, it, part of our budgeting each year, if you look at the budget, is debt service that the district has. This should not have an effect, a significant effect on our debt service for this budget, and based upon the schedule, our budget's going forward, it should reflect essentially what we had proposed to the municipalities, the only difference is, it may extend the financing a couple more years.
Does that increase the cost of extended financing?
Well, it would, except for a couple of factors. With a bond anticipation note, you're paying interest only, and it is suggested, because of the pending lawsuits, that if we were to go out to bond at this time, we may not get a favorable rating, and may end up paying a higher interest rate. So it's important to resolve some of those legal issues within the district, which, you know, may put us in a more favorable situation from an interest standpoint. That said, who knows what interest rates are going to look like, you know, in the future.
So the ban, as an example, the ban is for up to three years, it doesn't mean that after the first year, that we, you know, we could decide to go out and issue a bond at that point, therefore, it, you know, saves you some money on interest. If you, and I'll put this, you know, try to put this all in writing, but for example, the total cost of the original bond, which was the first, the first time that Dick Renigan, our financial advisor, showed us an exhibit that he felt would work for us, was five point two million, about one point two million of interest, for a total of six point four million, and that was from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-four. This new schedule, again, if we were to spend up to five point two million, is, you know, around six million, fifty-eight thousand total, so it's a little cheaper, because the payments being made, they don't start to two thousand seventeen possibly, but they're being made consistent amount every time, not going from really small up to big. But, again, if we do the bond anticipation note, you have some of that interest cost. Again, when the Finance Committee asked him last Thursday, what it costs more to do it this way, and I think he feels like nobody can, again, what Tim just said, nobody can predict interest rates, but that it actually could be better than what we have now, as far as the total cost, or kind of be a wash, you know, everything considered.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Does it change the, what you're going to do, does it change the plan on any of the things?
No, we would, we would basically go out for a bond anticipation note soon to a bank, and be approved, and then we would, it would be a drawdown kind of loan, and we would get the work done that we originally said we would, this summer, and maybe into, you know, next year, a little bit, but we were still, the timeline would still stay the same, pretty much, as far as the work getting done.
When we built the Woolwich School, we went out for bond anticipation notes, part of the reason to go out for bond anticipation note is so that you get access to the funds more quickly. A local bank, if they know that, okay, the voters have approved this, and we know that you're going to get that money, and you have the ability to pay it back, it's almost like gap financing. We did it with Woolwich to get some of those early projects done, get some cash flowing, and then as soon as we got the bond money, we paid off the note. So, it's a fairly common practice, we hadn't anticipated doing it in this case, but it seems to fit the need, and doesn't affect our budget as much as if we were to start paying back on the bond right away. So any other questions from the board about this? I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on this. Okay, we'll move on to item eight point three, West Bath Withdrawal Committee, Kyle?
We had a, only one meeting, or two meetings since the last time we met, because we had a snow day. Right now, where we are in the process, we're trying to build the basic, baselines for what the budget would be, or what the world would look like if West Bath was by itself last year, and then what it would look like possibly going forward. Also looking at, exploring different options as far as MSU, AOS, or RSU potentials for the town of West Bath. And at the same time, we've interviewed a consultant, helped us through building some of the models and stuff that will help us determine what the, you know, what the costs will be, or the best, no way to really predict it a hundred percent, but the best predictions that we can see, what it would have been if West Bath was by itself, what it would look like in the future during a few different options. And the other thing we're working on right now is putting together contracts and liabilities that the town would be responsible for, if it were to leave the RSU, what those, what those would be, we're trying to identify those, and then come up with a number value, so that's where we are, still kind of in that phase of just kind of getting the structure of what needs to be done, so that we can build a, not only a withdrawal agreement, but a future plan that the students of West Bath would, would use for their education going forward.
Any questions for Kyle?
Kyle, when do you anticipate having the minutes from the last two meetings available for publication on your website?
I believe the minutes are up there, the newest ones are up there, if they're not there, I just received an email from Peter Ossoreco that said, that these are the updated minutes, so usually when I receive that, they get posted, so if they haven't posted today, I bet they'll be posted the next day. Because he just, he just sent me, I just received the email this afternoon, and I haven't checked up there myself, but usually when I receive the email within that day or so, they're up there, so. He had an error, I think, is the reason why there was a delay, and then there's one that's gonna be missing, because we had a snow day where we didn't have the meeting, so if you're looking for ones missing, that's why, there wasn't, there wasn't a meeting in the morning.
Any other questions for Kyle? Kyle?
I think he probably is.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry about that. Kyle, I knew you'd probably answered this before, but could you just refresh me, what are, or what is the main cause, or what are the main causes for West Bath, as a town going through this process in the first place to withdraw?
Some of the biggest are local control, which is difficult to find, because it's, a lot of people have different views on what local control means, but a lot of that has to do with budget, and budgetary concerns, increases that the town has voted down or voted against, yet those still are in place. For example, like the bond, or the cost-sharing referendum that happened in the past, all those were defeated in West Bath, yet there's still realization that, you know, that's, you know, the reality of what's, the current situation is. There's also school choice. Prior to RSU one, West Bath had school choice for their, their students, that's something that people wanted, they still want apparently. The retention of West Bath School, that it remains open, and control of that is another big one. Those are probably the biggest three, they're out there. Local control, like I said, it, it can mean a lot of different things, local control of the elementary school, means everything from setting the curriculum, you know, that kind of control, obviously, there's no gonna be, no local control for a high school unless West Bath built a high school, and I don't think that's feasible, so, but I think from what I can sense from the people, it's a law on controlling what will happen with the budget, and having more control of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kyle? One thing I wanted to suggest, I have attended a couple of meetings, I know that they've been looking at the Freeport case study and the Saco case study, one thing that might be helpful, a community you might want to talk to, would be talk to Georgetown, because Georgetown often not joining RSU, and you might get a sense of, I know they're a K-6 school, get a sense of what their budgetary costs were, and, you know, what kind of challenges they're facing, what their cost per student is, and the relationship that they've now developed with, they're with an AOS now, so.
I think they're like, as I look through this, that was one of my tasks, to look through all AOSs that were nearby, and they happen to be the only one, that's, you know, geographically.
They've been associated with ME47, they'd be good people to talk to.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item nine point O, Superintendent's Report, Patrick?
Yeah, just, just a couple of updates, before I actually turn over to Judy to give an update on professional development that happened last week in the system, but just an update, Woolwich School Principal, we're in the process of doing that, Judy's leading that effort, and we have, I think we had twenty-two applicants apply for the principal position, we interviewed six last Wednesday, and now have four applicants that are returning this Wednesday for a second round of interviews. After that, it could be, you know, a couple finalists coming to meet with myself and Judy for another interview, it also could be, if, depending on the candidate and where they work, it also, we also do site visits, you know, if they're a current principal now someplace, then we often will do that as well, so, we, I think, def, well, can't say definitely, but I think, I'm pretty sure that we'll have an applicant to bring forward to you at our, obviously at our next meeting in April, for that position. On the flip side, we have a whopping four applications for business manager, and we have, so Ruthie might have to stay, but we have advertised it in at least five different locations, we've tried to network with other school districts, business managers, and superintendents, and, you know, we've made a lot of phone calls, and we'll continue to advertise, and we have been strategizing of other alternatives that we could do, you know, on a maybe a one-year basis, if we cannot find a qualified applicant, so I just wanted to give you an update on those two things. Judy, wanna give a quick update? What are you, just pull that one.
Okay, so last week, we did something different than we've done in the recent past, we had two PD days in a row, so, and it worked out. So, and it worked out really quite well, I think, although we're not going to, as you'll see in the calendar coming up, we're not going to do that again. Next year, at least, that's not our proposal. What you have in front of you is just a rundown of the different schools and what each one did on each of those days. So you can see on March 13th that Morris High School continued their work with Great School Partnership on graduation standards and proficiency-based education. And as I mentioned to some of you, I guess it was in a finance meeting, so maybe not all of you heard that, you will be getting a presentation on proficiency-based education in April, and Ken Templeton and Jay Pinkerton will be here to do that. At BRCTC, they were in session for out-of-district students, so they didn't actually have PD'd it that day. Bath Middle and Woolwich Middle Schools, they had the first day of a two-day session on close reading. And close reading is something that comes up in the Common Core Standards really significantly, and I just put a little explanation of what that means for you there. An intensive analysis of a text, understand what it says, how it says it, and what it means. Looking for evidence in a text to justify answers from students. And it most often involves multiple readings and going deeper with each reading. And this was facilitated by Holly Feeney and Pam Doe, who had been to a workshop on close reading and thought it was so powerful that they wanted to come back and share it with the staff. I actually spent that day there with them, and it was, they did a fabulous job. They really did. And then all the K-5 schools took part in a technology day, which Dean Emerson organized, and throughout the day, there were a variety of mini-sessions. Some were given by the tech staff and Dean, and others by teachers. He did a really wonderful job organizing it. You can see some of the examples there, using the iPad as a document camera, iPads, useful apps, and ideas for the novice techie, QR codes in the classroom, becoming familiar with commonsense media digital citizenship, digital storytelling, and/or stop-action movies. And they did, they actually created some movies that day, and I have a feeling when a certain someone retires at the end of this year, you may see one of them, so it's pretty cool. Then on March 14th, all schools had their own building-based day, except for Morris. They had a comp day for parent-teacher conferences that day. And BRCTC, the students in faculty attended Skills USA, had a great time there, I understand. Bath Middle School had their second day of the close reading, as referred to above. Woolwich Central K-8, the middle school teachers returned to Woolwich on that second day, where they had been involved in close reading the first day. And they did grade-level teams, goal-setting around student engagement, which is something we've been talking about at the administrative team level. They also did some grade-level planning related to the Lucy Cockens writing program. And then at the end of the day, they actually had some community building, which I was there for, and it was pretty neat to see. Beth Harrington had organized some activities that they took part in, and they were wild. Pretty fun. Fisher Mitchell and Dyke Newell, they combined forces, and they had a session, two-hour session in the morning on utilizing art to increase positive behavior. This was given by Brady Nicholson, who's a local artist who works with schools on using doodling and different kinds of art to calm kids down, or to, when kids are in transition, say from recess coming in, it calms them down for them just to have five or 10 minutes with a marker and a piece of paper. And then they spent some time on Lucy Cockens and how that program is progressing, K-5. And then Sarah Hellman did a session on self-regulation and behavior. West Bath was expedition planning through expeditionary learning. They have, they all have expeditions coming up this spring, so they spent some time planning on that. And again, at close reading, you can see, they identified strategies to engage students with complex texts, and it spurred close reading again came up. And they've been reading a book called Notice and Note, and so they spent the day on different aspects of that, discussing that book. So that was it, I think we had great feedback. The tech day was, I mean, people just loved it, which sometimes you don't always get that on tech days, but it really had great positive feedback. Any questions?
Thank you, Judy. A couple other items I had was just Harlem Rockets were in town, the high school, last week. I think it was last Monday, and it was a fundraiser for National Society, as well as jobs for undergraduates. And it was just a great way to bring that community together. There was plenty of people there, and the police department, and RSU I staff, as well as a few students participated in the fun game, and really the purpose is, you know, a fundraiser, and laced up my shoes for maybe the first quarter, and then I took a walk because I had another commitment, but I didn't shoot it and score, so I didn't foul anybody, so it was okay. Alex Gates, an eighth grader at BMS, qualified for the, I think it's his third consecutive statewide geography bee, quite an accomplishment, and some of those questions are very difficult. And then in your backup, Skills USA, we're up in Bangor last Thursday, Friday. We had 14 students compete in the competition, and we're proud to announce that two students received gold medals, Nate Bonzani in Commercial Arts, and Courtney Tippett in Health Science, and won silver medal in Jordan Omo in Commercial Arts. So congratulations to them.
Mr. Manuel, just in addition to what you said about the Harlem Rockets fundraiser, we, on behalf of NHS and jobs for undergraduates, raised over $2,000 for the local driver's ed scholarship program and a local charity that chooses. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. We'll move on to the financial report.
Ruth is here, and we'll give you a quick overview. You want to take the power, I can go.
All right, you have the February report, and this month, at Patrick's suggestion, I think someone here asked maybe to put what was on the prior month for an ending balance. So your first column shows what the last month looked like. As you can see, we're running about the same. It looks a little bit better for the month of February, but the month of March has been really cold, and we're still burning oil like crazy, so that could, you know, that could change a bit. On the revenue side, we're still pretty much, you know, pretty close there too. And it does look like we're maybe going to be, according to this, $7,000 short. The tuition has been adjusted a little bit because we've had, you know, there were students coming and going, you just, you don't get right to the penny on those. Other than that, the one thing that could be an issue by the time we get to the end of June is, again, the main care. The issue being that they have not yet, they've taken one payment of $50,000 to $60,000, and we budgeted a little over $400,000 for that. That doesn't mean that they aren't going to take it. I just don't know what is taking them so long to take it, because they had indicated that they would be doing it every quarter, and they're not doing it yet. If I remember correctly, they have taken, it's nearly a year old that they've taken the money for, so they're back a year. And if they, if they take it, I haven't received the March payment yet. That should be coming, but I haven't received an email that there's been any adjustment to it either. So I'm kind of assuming that the March subsidy payment will be intact with nothing deducted from it. The next one would be in June, and whether or not they are able to catch up in that whole year, I highly doubt it. So my suggestion will be that since that nearly $400,000, I'm suspecting will not be deducted from subsidy or spent on our part, it will therefore go into fund balance. And next year, if they start to catch up, your subsidy will be short, but you'll have the funds in fund balance to catch up, if you can follow that.
Is fund balance capped under?
Is it capped?
Statute, in terms of the amount we can carry.
I think it's 2%, but I don't think that we would run into that issue. I can check that out to make sure, especially if it maybe gets designated to. I'll check out to see what that, how that says. But that's the one issue that I can see happening on this, because they, I just don't know what's going on with them out there. Sorry.
Are there any questions for Ruth? I had one.
Okay.
I had two, actually.
Okay.
The first is, appreciate the fact that you've added this second column, but I was a little perplexed, because my assumption would be, and it's true in some cases, but not all, that the amount remaining to spend for this month would be less than the previous month. And yet, in almost every case, we've gone another month, but we have more left to spend.
That is, I am projecting, I am guessing what they're going to spend in the month. They may not spend that. I look at the, I look at the supply lines, I look at all of the contracted fees, all of the monthly services that we receive, you know, the maintenance items, and I just, what, a lot of times what I try to do is average what we've been spending per month, and then project that as what will be spent. Now, it doesn't mean that they will spend it, ever. I don't know, because I don't know what they, when I say they, each school, I don't know if they have spent what they're going to spend, or if all of a sudden they spend it all in a line. So I'm just trying to project based on what we have been spending and what I know is going to go out.
But for instance, we did regular instruction, because regular instruction is primarily staff salaries, of course. So we budgeted $10.3 million.
Yeah.
Year-to-date, we've expended $5.2, we've encumbered $4.8. So before the end of the year, we're going to spend $4.8, which left us last month a balance of $261,000. Now, I would have thought that that number would have, over the course of a month, would have further gone down, because we would have had an additional month of expenditure.
In that encumbrance is where I've also estimated, I estimated last month that they would spend, I'll just pick a number, $50,000.
Okay, I see.
And so this month, I'm just, I've maybe reduced that a little bit, because assuming that they spent some of that 50.
So despite the fact that going from the beginning of February to the end of February, we actually have almost like a fund balance that's greater.
Than last month?
Yeah.
Right now, but I wouldn't count on that.
Sure. It's just interesting that in almost every category.
And as we get, as we get closer to the end of the year, I'm going to assume more and more that they aren't going to spend what they have left in their accounts, because I'm assuming that if they haven't needed it by April, they probably won't need all of it. And so I'm hoping, you know, possibly, that that will grow, but I certainly don't want to promise that.
Then my second question is, on the revenue side, is it just a coincidence that the local funding amount remaining matches the negative amount in state subsidy?
That is the difference in the subsidy. If you remember, we received more subsidy, we are going to receive more subsidy this year than what? Remember how it came in at the end of the year, that we received $362,000 more in subsidy for this year, and we told the towns that they did not have to pay that. So they will, their local appropriation will be $362,000 short, but we'll have it in extra subsidy. That's why that looks like that.
Okay.
I can make it easier than zero when we're both out, but it is a net of zero.
And that, if my memory serves me correctly, that was the issue that we voted on last year. We had a couple of options of how we were going to handle that, and we decided that it was going to go back to the communities.
In this year.
In this year.
Because we could have received it and had it in fund balance to help, but if you remember, the towns really appreciated us giving it to them this year, the credit this year.
So have we given it to them yet?
I don't physically give it to them, I adjust their assessment.
Have we made the adjustment?
Mm-hmm, they pay on a monthly basis, so I adjusted it right at the beginning.
So over, you broke it up over the period that they get.
Over the 12 ones, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ruth? Okay, thanks, Ruth. Move on to old business, beginning with item 10.1, review of board goals. Restate the obvious, the reason why we have this item on there every year, I mean, every month, is just to remind us of what our annual goals are. So just take a look at those, I don't know if there are any questions, comments about the current goals. Okay, hearing done, we will move on to second reading of policy KA, KA-R, and KA-E1, classroom observation. Now, in your packet, you had one version, but before you, you have an amended version. So I think we're looking at the amended version that was here, not the one from the packet. Is there a motion? Move to approve, as written? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. Any further discussion on this policy? There was a lot of talk, and I see the changes about changing observation to visitation. Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Unopposed, that passes. Okay, item 10.3, second reading of policyKF, community use of school facilities. Again, this is an action item. Is there a motion? Move to approve is written by Alan. Is there a second? Seconded by Bill. Any further discussion on this policy? All those in favor of the motion to approve?
Okay.
Steve?
I did have a question.
Okay.
On the second page of KF, you refer to, it says it, but this is, I guess it's a paragraph for subsection. I, page two, building administrator and/or custodian. I, on page 2, building administrator and/or custodian shall have authority to enforce any or all building regulations and policies. Custodians are all our employees or some of these contract?
They're all contracted.
I mean, is this really?
I don't know, what do you call it, I?
I. I mean, if they're, if they're contract, these aren't our employees. And I'm not sure what authority they would have over our buildings. Or even whether you'd want to give them any authority over our buildings. And I wonder if you just substitute the facilities manager, I mean, or Dave, I guess, I'm not director of facilities. I mean, I know my citizens, because these are the folks who...
Are in the building.
Might well be in the building. But it's, I mean, it's really, it's really strange to to give a contract employee this kind of authority.
Dave, I don't think that came up, that didn't come up in our meetings in intervention. I mean, we can change it, building administrator and/or RSU1 facilities personnel. So that, I mean, we have three employees.
Yes.
And sometimes, they could often be called by our custodians who are contracted if they had questions, so I'm comfortable with that.
Just to be clear, I would just leave it with Dave, who is the director of...
Maintenance.
Director of facilities.
So do you want to make a suggestion?
Well, this is for action. So I would, I would, I would move we amend sub- sub-paragraph, paragraph I.
On page 2?
On page 2. To include, or to read, the building administrator and the director of maintenance shall have authority.
So RSU1 facilities director?
Yeah. Or designate, do you think, or not?
No.
I think so.
You fine with that, Alan?
Yes.
He's willing to amend your motion to include that, the change?
So moved.
Okay. Any votes? Okay, so we have a motion to approve with one amendment or one change on page 2. Eliminating the word custodian and replacing it with RSU1 facilities director. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Any opposed? Opposed? You made the motion. Okay, so that...
But I like that someone is...
That's all right. All right, that passes unanimously. Okay. Um, we'll move on to... Excuse me, new business, item 11.1. Sorry. Approve the computation and declaration of votes of the November 5th, 2013 RSU1, excuse me, school construction referendum. This is an action item. Um, is there a motion?
I move we approve the computation and declaration of votes.
Okay, motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, so you made that motion, Steve?
So I move that the computation and declaration of votes dated March 24th, 1914, or 2014. And attached here to be, and it be hereby approved. Further, that the computation and declaration of votes be entered upon the records of regional school unit number one, the RSU. And further voted that the, that a certified copy of the computation and declaration of votes be sent to each of the municipal clerks within the RSU.
Seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. None opposed, that passes unanimously. Okay, item 11.2. Approve out-of-state field trip request from the Morris High School Foreign Arts Department. This is an action item, is there a motion?
Move.
Move to approve by Bill?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alan?
This isn't only out-of-state, this is out-of-the-country.
No, not this one. This one is the trip to Boston.
Oh, you're going to Boston, one first?
Oh, no.
That's okay, do we need to take a break? Okay. Well, losing a little steam here, folks. We still have the budget to look at. Any further discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please raise your hand. None opposed, that passes. Okay, we'll move to item 11.2. Uh, approve out-of-state field trip requests for, excuse me. I just did that one. Maybe I need to take a break.
11.3.
11.3, thank you. Approve out-of-state overnight field trip request from the Morris High School Foreign Language Department. Is there a motion?
Move.
Move to approve by Alan?
Second.
Seconded by Dave? Any further discussion?
This is the one that goes out of the country.
This is the one we have. But this isn't, we do another one. I think there's more than one that we do out of the country. Isn't there?
This is the main one, the last one.
This is the main one? Okay.
Just change something.
This one is out of the country. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. None opposed, that passes. Okay, item 11.35. Another out-of-state field trip that was in your packet here when you arrived. That one. I don't seem to have it. This is again, a trip to Boston by 4th and 5th grade at Phippsburg. To support motion studies.
Move.
Move to approve. Seconded by Bill. Any further discussion, any questions on this one? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please raise your hand. None opposed, that passes. Thank you. Okay, uh, item 11.4. Approve proposed 2014, 2015 school calendar. Um, this is an action item. I don't know if we should wait.
Al?
I don't know. It's an action item, is there a motion to approve this calendar?
Move we approve.
Move to approve by Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Okay, any further discussion? Patrick, can you tell us?
Yeah, Judy has the, Judy's the lucky person that gets to look at this. She can explain the process and answer any questions that you might have.
So, this is actually a month earlier than you typically get the calendar. Um, and the reason for that is, in the past, the state has required that we submit calendars to them by June 1st because, as you know, as you've heard in the past, our calendars have to align, all of the schools that send to be RCTC can have no more than five dissimilar days. So we have to work together with Wiscasset and Boothby and Lincoln Academy um, to design our calendars and try to align them. So that process has been happening for, really, for several months now. Uh, trying to go back and forth and see when our professional development days are going to happen and trying to get as much in line as possible. We did make the five days last year. Uh, this year, they moved the date up to May 1st. So, we really felt like we had to get it on the calendar this month uh, in order to get it to you to see if there were any proposed changes. The process was that I first took it, well, we went, went to the BRTC, BRCTC group and Joel did that, um, you know, worked with them on a calendar. We took that to the administrative team a couple of different times, got suggestions from them. I met and consulted with representatives from the union. And that's what you have in front of you. Um, it's a very similar calendar to the one that we have this year with a couple of changes that I'll highlight. Um, you can see in November, in March, in April, below the calendar months, you have half comp days or full comp days for MHS. Um, we've never really been specific about that. We've always put them down as professional development days. They really aren't. And so we wanted to be more transparent about how we're using that time. Um, and then, um, we, as I sort of referred to when I was doing the PD summary, the principals felt that they missed that January PD day whereas we had the two March days this year. Um, they felt like it was a long time between the October PD day and the March days. And they wanted to, um, go back to having a PD day in January and then the one in March instead of two. And the other change, uh, you can see in the note on the right-hand side that's in green, the calendar includes five snow days this year. So, uh, that was something that came from the administrative team. They felt that, um, you know, if we included the days, people wouldn't be so expecting and making plans and students would, students wouldn't be so absent those last, you know, few days because they'd made plans and we were making up days. So, we're gonna see how that works this year, um, and then reassess next year. Questions?
Any questions for Judy?
June 22nd. Wow.
Wow.
I think it does, I think it's good to have that out there, though, I agree. To know that's what the date is and if it comes earlier, that's one thing. But knowing that it might not come later, I like that.
Um, I've got a couple of questions for you. I know in the past, we've had some issues with the calendar in terms of certain conflicts with religious holidays. Has that been addressed, that base has been covered?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, my second question is, on those days where you've indicated a half a comp day?
Mm-hmm.
That means though, that in all of our schools, whether it's K through A or where it applies to...
Morris.
Or March.
Doesn't.
Um, that there, there is the opportunity for parents to have a conference either the Thursday or the Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are two half-days for students, as you'll see, indicated in the orange down below, that explanation is there. Um, so the 13th and 14th of November, for example, are half-days for students. Um, teachers work full day on the 13th and they have the half-day on the 14th for conference.
So then, as you've described it, although those are parent-teacher conference days, because they're a half-day with students, there is no opportunity for...
Oh, I'm sorry, I think I misunderstood. On the 14th, there is not. However, um, many of the elementary, well, I think all of the elementary schools do do conferences after school, before school, in the evenings, in the weeks prior for people who can't make it. I don't know that we turn any parents away for a conference. But these are just times that are absolutely set aside.
Okay.
Am I explaining that correctly? Yes?
Yeah, all the elementary schools have one evening conference, I think, I was...
Yeah.
Where we, we're going to come in next Wednesday, April 10th, or whatever the date is. So they'll come in and do their three or four hours, we'll be in there. And that half-day in the afternoon is a comp time for those three or four hours. So it's time outside of their comp time today.
Right. Okay. So it's one evening, even though it's a two-day parent-teacher conference period. I just want to make sure that as we, as we approve this and we send it out to parents, if they see this, for instance, November 13th and 14th, the 13th and 14th are parent-teacher conference days, realistically, it's only the 13th that's the parent-teacher conference day. There are no parent-teacher conferences on the 14th, correct?
They can be.
They can be.
I came from a similar district and I've had, I think I've had one phone call in this system where a person, again, like Judy's already explained, is teachers will have them prior to the 13th if they need to. They'll have them, you know, the following week if they need to. Um, but contractually, you know, we have to do that compensation piece. But we have had some examples since I've been here where a parent says, "I can't do this date, this date, and this date. The only date that works for me is the 14th. So can I come meet with you on the 14th?" And the teacher has been there for them. Um, and then the principal works out the appropriate...
Okay.
I can see your point, though, Tim.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Just if, as it gets published, I mean, I just want to clarify that. Any other questions on the calendar?
There's a reason the comp day goes on Friday.
I'm sorry?
Is there a reason why the conferences are not on Friday versus Thursday? Versus the comp day we've been?
I think that's the way it's been, past practice.
This, this time coming up, our comp day will actually be on Thursday because our talent show is on Friday. So the teachers will have the option of being on Thursday or Friday.
Is that just in this school?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a carryover, I guess.
Any other questions for Judy?
Just with professional involvement, you know, you, you spoke earlier about the success of having those two days in March. And I realize that, you know, appreciate that, that staff feels that they need, they need to break that up, I guess.
Well, the administrators felt that way.
The administrators.
Yeah.
How is that going to affect what you're able to accomplish?
Well, I don't think it will affect it because even this year, we had one sort of district-wide day and then we had one building-based day. And we can still do the same thing. We typically in the past have divided our professional development days up between district-wide initiatives and building-based initiatives. So, you know, I think, uh, when all is said and done, it won't really matter that much. We didn't have a cohesive, except for the Bass Middle School piece. We didn't have a cohesive focus for the two days in any other school.
Any other questions? Thanks for the explanation, Judy. So there is a motion on the table by Steve to approve, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the calendar, raise your hand. None opposed, that passes. Okay, uh, we get to 11.5, the first reading of the fiscal year 2015 school budget. And I will turn that over to Patrick.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be fairly brief and then see what questions the board may have at this point. But we did talk in finance about not going through my, you know, the PowerPoint that I created for the finance committee. But just so you know, I mean, again, we have another finance committee meeting on Thursday. And I'm really looking for guidance at that finance committee meeting, somewhat from the finance committee, of course, where we'll come in, um, at the public forum on April 7th. We started this at not, around a 9% increase. And we basically asked the principals and the directors to put in what they felt they needed as well as our priorities that were listed in the PowerPoint that I, that I gave you. Um, then we went back and really reduced in the area of non-labor supplies, instructional equipment, all of that. And it brought it down to a 6% increase on the local contribution, which was about a 4% on our total expense budget. a 4% on our total expense budget. So, I just want to make sure people understand there's two different things we're talking about here. Then, as Steve mentioned earlier, the finance committee directed the administrative team to reduce further from those current percentages. So, we went back and as of right now, it's approximately at a 4% local contribution and a 3% increase on total expenses. We've gone below that a little bit with some of our documents, but we've also been around that range someplace. So, that's an approximation of where we are right now. With state subsidy, we received, and I emailed this to all of you, $53,000 more than we did last year. But in my mind, that's very tentative and it makes me a little bit nervous. I think, well, Jennifer can maybe update you even more than I can, but I know there was a rally up in Augusta today for anybody interested that could go up and talk about the deficit with the appropriations committee that they're trying to find money. And one of those target areas that's been rumored to be discussed is general purpose aid. And so, you know, Ruth is, and I have talked a lot and, you know, looking at it, I think it's nine and a half million dollars that they're looking to make up. And if subsidy gets hit, you know, we look at past retailments that we've received before based on, you know, our size and everything else. And it's a little scary if in a week or two or a month that we get word that subsidy's going to be cut. So, again, that's, I know that's always a moving target. We have some, you know, we have information that is going up, but it makes us a little nervous at this point right now. The reductions that we came in at after the finance committee first met with us was in the area of probably, I think it was 400, 400,000. And most of that, not most of it, but a decent amount of that came from non-labor, going back and asking the principals and the directors to look at their supply lines, look at their equipment lines, and try to bring them in as flat as possible, even though we started the process by saying, "Give us what you need." And all along, they based it on zero-based budgeting right from the beginning, but we had to bring that down to kind of flat in a lot of the lines on every single one. We also have discussed a little bit as an administrative team of possible staffing areas that we could reduce based on purely on student numbers and need in the district. But again, it would be premature for me. We haven't spoken to anybody in the district yet, but that is some of that savings that you'll see when we send you off the final documents as well. So, you know, the budget presentation that I showed to the finance committee early on really looked at our enrollment, which is pretty stable at this point, especially with the pre-K numbers that we can count, current staffing, revenues and expenses, debt service, and then our priorities. So, right now, I can tell you this much, that in this budget, right now, we've made some reductions as we talked about in non-labor. And we have some, what I would say are projected savings on a few areas of labor. But what is in this budget right now for priority one, and this stems back to, I think it was November, all of the board came together at a, what I would call a cheap retreat type rule, where we talked about priorities for the system. And out of that, you know, we listed a fair amount of priorities. And then, the administrative team has then talked that over ad nauseam to really prioritize year one, two, and three. So, in this budget right now is a one FTE, full-time equivalent for alternative education at Morris High School, which would primarily serve grades 11 and 12, possibly 10 to start with. Pre-K, what's in there right now is going to your universal pre-K. But I've had conversations with Rosalie Perkins and talked to her a little bit about the definitive numbers that we'll get if we go to universal versus possibly looking at other alternatives of trying to maybe structure the program differently and not raise our numbers so much. So, that's just, just so you're aware, that's a conversation that we're having. But right now, the funds are in the budget for universal pre-K. Guidance counselor at Woolwich, right now, from going from a .6, which is three days a week, to a 1.0, considering their student numbers and population. Fisher Mitchell at One Ed Tech. The expansion of the life skills program, which is a continuation of what you did last year. And then, the last one is choral music, which is a .2, which is one day a week at Morris High School. And that's really based on student demand, student signup for our choral music program. So, that's what's in there right now. There was one other area. It was a small increase in social work in the district and that we removed after having a discussion with our administrative team at this point right now. So, really, I just open it up to any discussion that you'd like to have, but I just wanted to kind of give the public an overview of where we're at at this point. And again, it's fluid because as an example, the finance committee charged the administrative team with reducing the budget, which I understand that we want to be sensitive to making sure that the district moves in a positive direction at the same time being sensitive to the taxpayers, especially after last year's budget, especially with the bond referendum. As an example, one spot that we went back and reduced and had some good discussions was maintenance because of the bond issue. But after we made these reductions and came in at the percentage that I talked about, I think there were some people, and I don't want to speak for anybody here, but I think there were some people in the finance committee that maybe felt that we went too deep with some of the cuts or maybe that cut concerned them a little bit. And that's what the whole budget process is about. So, again, that's why I keep using that word fluid as we go through this. But I hope that by Thursday with the finance committee meeting, and by the end of the week, we're going to have to put out, start to put out our documents of the budget through ADS on our website and hard numbers as far as what we're going to go forward with for at least the public forum meeting that we have on April 7th. And then, break it down into the local contribution, which goes through our cost-sharing formula so the community can start to understand what is the budget impact for them.
And I've not been part of the process before, but if we move forward to look at any kind of different organization of Bath Elementary Schools, how, that doesn't yet reflected any of these numbers yet because that's far enough out to not impact. That's still based on the same setup of all the different schools that we have, all the schools here right now.
The other thing to kind of put into perspective is, as Patrick said, the initial budget that came to the finance committee, we looked at, and again, this is just looking at it from the local side, we were looking at about a 6.3% increase. That amounted to a $1.1 million increase over where we were last year. The second budget that was presented to the finance committee, that number was brought down to 3.8%, which would result in a $691,000 increase to the local. Now, on a $28 million budget, a $691,000 increase in light of the fact that, as we talked about early in the process, we have contract obligations, you know, staffing increases that we have to honor. We've seen an 11% increase in healthcare costs, fuel costs going up. And we knew that there would be some impact to our budget in year one of the bond. So, all of those, I had anticipated, just staffing increases, healthcare increases, fuel increases, and bond increases, running somewhere between 3% to 3.5%. And we'd been presented with a budget that adds all these additional items, makes some cuts, but puts us at a 3.8% increase to the local. So, that's just my take on the numbers and where we stand at this point.
But just that stress of that number, you know, I mean, it could fluctuate a little bit unless the board feels eventually that, you know, it's got to be a certain percentage. But again, with subsidy being unknown, you know, Tim just talked about a lot of, you know, there's a lot of moving parts in this budget, maybe even compared to, you know, last year and the year before when I was here, just because of, you know, different items that we have going on right now.
Mr. Manuel, you had mentioned that maintenance of facilities was one of the items that was cut in the, I guess, preliminary planning process. Would that have any sort of, I guess, negative effect on our ability to carry out the renovation bond or to make sure that those provisions get done?
No. I mean, the bond is, the projects that we outlined that would be done with the bond, it's, you know, it's more, you know, some of the projects that are, you know, in addition to that, you know, I'm not trying to minimize it, but say, there was money put in there for, you know, painting certain classrooms or for certain things that are in there, but not major, not major items. But again, it's that fine line between part of, some people could argue that part of the reason we're going out for a bond is because, you know, as a system, we have to put as much attention to our facilities. And so, it's walking that fine line of not cutting out everything and still leaving money in there to do the projects and the routine day-to-day stuff obviously is in there. But it won't have an effect on the bond.
And some of that discussion too with maintenance, because other dimensions of that department look for projects that can be pushed off onto bond financing that were originally proposed to be page-to-go projects. And also to identify cost savings in the maintenance budget that that went directly back to the projects that we're doing. Some of those, the major, certainly one of the major projects at Morris, for example, a replacement of windows, which I think the finance committee feels ought to generate energy saving. And although some of this is not precise science, obviously, we'd like to see some of the, we'd like to see some of those savings reflected. And, I mean, this was the conversation we had at the last, at the last finance committee meeting. So, anyways, that discussion has a couple of different elements.
Are there any other questions, comments?
I do, but do we have to pay it all?
Always. Okay. Thank you, Kyle. It's 8:04. We need a motion to extend the meeting beyond 8 o'clock.
Should we move this down?
Moved by Bill, seconded by Kyle. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Continue the meeting at 8:30. Kyle, can you take the microphone, please?
Regarding technology, do we have any increases in the technology? I went through the budget myself. I didn't see anything specific, but there was talk in the summary about implementation costs and that type of thing, but I couldn't find any. Is there going to be an increased cost for implementation of the new technology that was purchased?
The leases are staying as-is for the one-to-one that we have with state. And then, we have the refresh. So, it's really, I mean, Ruth is looking it up as we speak, but, you know, Dean's presentation, he came in, and also, he was able to actually cut a little bit of money in that second process that we came in on, on supplies. But it's really trying to maintain, I mean, the technology integrated conversation came up in the administrative team. But as far as supplies in general, we can probably find that in the next minute or two.
I don't have the detail of the bond, but there are major, there are major items in the bond project that relate to technology, some of the infrastructure, switches, et cetera. So, I think, I think, of course, the improvements in technology that the district will experience in this upcoming budget, a lot of it will be financed out of the bond process.
And I'm just looking at the, I have a copy of the presentation that Kyle made, excuse me, Dean.
Sorry.
In reply to Kyle's question.
I brought that with the presentation.
Versus the different cost centers that Dean had. In contracted fees, he was looking at reducing that amount by $6,000. He was keeping telephone cost center exactly the same. Internet connectivity cost was going up by a couple thousand. Travel, he had increased by $800. Instructional supplies was only up a little over $1,000, $1,600. Equipment leases was going down by $5,000. And initially, he had staff development at, right around the same numbers last year, almost $10,000. So, that was in his initial proposal. And then, he broke those down. Ruthie, you can speak to it?
That's the same sheet that I went through.
Okay. In a later proposal, he was looking at reducing technology supplies by about $8,000. And I know that he had a conversation when he was present about replacing some of the projectors that may account for maybe one projector that he was talking about replacing. So, those are the changes that we've talked about, the new technology. Any other questions about the budget? It's interesting because as the finance committee saw it and with the presentations by the different departments, we looked at the budget from a need standpoint. What you're hearing tonight is purely numbers and percentages. So, it's almost the opposite of the way that it was presented to the finance committee. Kyle?
Good question. If I understand from the summary I got from West Bath, the Expeditionary Learning was cut from the budget, the fees for consulting. Why would we?
Nothing's been taken out, nothing definitive has been removed at this point. We had a meeting today with the, I guess I would say, designer coach for Expeditionary Learning and asking the question, "How can we continue the momentum and continue the connection with EL but possibly at a lesser cost?" And we look at, this is our fourth year of EL and look at the amount of money we've spent and then also the services that we receive, just like going back and looking at the amount of money and services that Woolwich received and BMS received. And so, actually, Emily and I just had a meeting today with the consultant, their consultant, and looked at different options. So, I'm meeting with Emily tomorrow to look at, again, how we can keep the connection with them, still move forward, so not pull the rug out and say, "We're not going to be doing Expeditionary Learning at West Bath." It's, you know, looking at a modification of possibly the amount of money and the services, but it still would be, you know, a connection with EL that would allow us to continue to move forward with all the work that we're doing.
So, whatever we're looking at won't affect the ability for them to finish the process that we're on. If I understand correctly, they're close to be accomplishing the goal of being fully implemented with EL. So, I'd be concerned if we're going to slow this process down because it seems to be integral in that school. You know, they seem to put a lot of work into this, you know, all being, it's a small amount of money for them to continue the work they've done. It seems like, you know, the students aren't engaged in the program, that the staff has put a lot of effort into it. So, hopefully...
And I think we're getting, like the meeting this morning, I think we're trying to gather some data right now and look at, and I think, you know, Emily even had a conversation, I think for the first time this morning with the designer to say, you know, I think there was some thoughts that maybe it was a year out. But then, when the communication today was more like, you know, we might be talking two or three more years out before they, whatever term you want to use, fully implemented or accredited school piece. I mean, the balancing act for us as a system is just with professional development money is, you know, as a system, looking at eight different buildings, is trying to look at it from a perspective of we want to support every one of our buildings and communities. It's, some of it's that equity discussion that we've had in the, you know, at an administrative team level. So, it's not something that we've, you know, made a final decision on or a final recommendation on. It's really just trying to get an idea from EL is how can we continue this work and keep moving forward, but asking them some questions about, you know, what does it cost and what do we get for our money, you know, things like that.
I'd just be concerned if we were to remove that or slow it down, stop it, because it seems like they've done a lot of good work in that program.
Yeah. The thing to keep... Yeah, the thing to keep in mind is, and we have talked about this within the finance committee during the presentations, Expeditionary Learning instructions will continue, that won't change. The only thing that would change is they have a contract with Expeditionary Learning to get a coach there every month. So the instruction to the, to the children won't change. The relationship with the parent company or organization, that would change.
So as long, I mean, I'm just, just concerned that it'll affect that progress going forward. That relationship can change, but as long as it's not going to, you know, hinder the progress that they, that they are trying to make, that they're making doing this.
And we talked about different options this morning. I mean, we want to keep moving forward, we want the momentum to keep moving, and the progress to keep moving. You know, the questions were more, at what point does a school, you know, regarding, like same with Woolwich and BMS, when we had those discussions, at what point do you feel like, you know, you can still move in that direction, but not have the level of services that you've had over the last four years? You know, so I mean, those are the conversations, you know, that we're having right now. We've talked about, how could we still have access and be part of their network at the same time, possibly having, you know, possibly having a coach that comes out of the Northeast area, maybe not as often to work, you know, to work with Emily or with our staff as well. So again, we had that discussion with EL just this morning.
Any other questions on the budget?
One more, sorry.
No, go ahead.
One more. A foreign language, are we dressing that in this budget and not see that at all?
Not, not in this budget.
Do we not have to do that as far as, I mean, aren't we required for our core?
I mean, it's part of the learning results, you know, K to, K to 12, and what a lot of schools do is wherever you start that process, for example, you start at the middle school level, then, you know, that's always the, often the question is, for those learning results, that's typically where you start for, you know, your six, seven, and eight is with the K one, two learning results. You know, it's something, it's in our, you know, on that presentation I gave you, I think it was in priority two, that, you know, as an administrative team, you know, we're certainly, you know, other, I'm not comparing us to other districts, but that's where unfortunately middle school foreign language, it's not that we don't support it, it's just trying to prioritize that, you know, that we don't, that we don't have it, it's not in this iteration of this budget.
I was just concerned because I thought we have to have a waiver or commission from the commissioner to make, to make a change, to not have that, I understand, with them in the administration, this is, this is briefly happened a while back, and I understand, I understand we, we need to provide that foreign language to middle school. If we aren't going to, we need to have some type of, you know, some reason, it's something that's approved from Department of Education that allows us to do that. So now, one time we had this, this is the only thing, I know we don't have it at all anymore, so now we effectively don't have any process to handle it. Now we're just concerned whether or not we can be in that situation without having any approval or waiver from the state.
I'll, I'll...
I don't know.
Yeah, I'll double check on that, but I mean, I've, I've never had that conversation with the, with the DOE, you know, I certainly will look into that. I mean, it's, I don't know that it's, like health education, we were fortunate enough to get that back in, talking to the Department of Education about that health piece. Their consultant up there obviously felt very passionate about that health education and asked a question, how are those students going to get, you know, those back, you know, I guess I would say, access or how are we going to get those learning results back? And it was a very similar conversation that, you know, financially, you know, we worked hard to get it, to get it back in. So it's, I mean, it's more like it's something we'd like to see get back in. We've talked about different alternatives, it's just not in priority one for, for this budget.
It's very confusing when you read the states, that's one, that's one.
Yep.
Ask the question.
I mean, it could be related, Kyle, I'll double check on that, it could be related to the comprehensive plan that we have to submit every year, and, you know, letting the Department of Education, just like other systems, SCD 75, for example, and other ones that don't offer middle, you know, specific foreign language, you know, letting them know that, so they're aware of it.
Thank you. Any other questions on the budget? Any specific concerns? Okay, I think that, you know, again, the finance committee will have another crack at this, this Thursday, and my assumption is they'll make some recommendation to the board, but if there are specific programs or changes, Patrick highlighted some of the additions that we've made to the budget, we've talked a little bit about some of the items that we're proposing, cutting from the budget, but I, it would be a good idea for the rest of the board to kind of get up to speed on that for the next, well, for the near future, because we do have a number of public meetings coming up to discuss the budget.
And what we'll do is we'll send you out by probably, hopefully, the end of this week, detailed information, and then updated ABS sheets as well, but also kind of a summary, so you'll know what the additions are and what the proposed reductions are.
Anything else, Steve? Is there anything you wanted to add?
No, again, just again, you know, it's, everyone is welcome at the finance committee meeting, so.
And just, you know, from my experience, having gone through these budgets before, I encourage you to look at the budget through two different lenses. Firstly, look at it from, if you can, sort of a financial historical perspective, look at what kind of increases we've seen over the past, you know, three to five years, where does what we're talking about fit in financially with what we've done in the past and, and, you know, what we're proposing for the future? The other lens I would encourage you to look at the budget in is from a, you know, from a programming or from a costing or item issue, if there's something that you feel needs to be back in the budget or something that we did not address, I encourage you to quantify that and either propose the cut or propose the addition, but do it in the context of, for everything we add, there's something that needs to come out, or ultimately it affects the bottom line, you know, vice versa, so. I guess I'll leave it at that. We'll move on to first reading of policies. And those policies were present here, we didn't receive anything in our pack there, I don't think. If we did, I didn't see it. First policy is policy J, G, A, B, job descriptions. Dave or Patrick, did you want to comment on this one? No?
No, pretty simple, it allows us to take, take out a few policies that we, we don't need because this is a, we'll argue one more.
Most of our discussions are focused on trying to get the tobacco policies. Can condition for being discussed approved?
Okay, so we'll move on then to first reading of policy ADC and ADC dash R, tobacco and related products used in possession, and tobacco and related products used in possession, administrative procedure. Comments on this one?
Do we have approval from the SCA or as far as the review by the faculty?
On which, which policy?
Was this run past the teachers union?
Which one, which policy?
Tobacco-related product.
Run by our, our two principals, correct? Then we send it to our, our two administrative, our two administrative, that would affect, we got feedback on that.
Again, we're kind of seeing, right. Next policy, policy D, J, C, heavy task accounts. Policy D, M, staff management in schools. Anything of note here? Okay. Move on to policy D, N, school properties disposition. Oh, and personal property. Let's move on. Move on to 11.7, discussion regarding K through five organizational structure in Bath. As I mentioned before, this is something that we've talked about as a board, it came up at the retreat this year, but it's nothing that we've formally had a discussion about as a board, at a board meeting. So turn it over to you, anything, do you want to prompt the discussion or?
Yeah, it was just something that has come up, really, for me at the beginning of this year, was from our two principals, Carrie Babcock is new at Fisher Mitchell, and you have Sally Brown at Dyke Newell. And just having discussions with them, again, Tim said it got brought up at the retreat, just about that transition for students having, you know, that, you know, looking at the benefits of having two K five schools, which is what it used to be, and just feeling like right now that the benefits of returning to a K five community school, or pre-K five, sorry, would have more benefits for students and families than it, than it is the current structure now. And, you know, I think what I can find, and Tim mentioned this at the beginning, is that I have reached out to, you know, one person on the committee when it was the Bath Board of Education, it was in June of 2004, when they had a group that studied this, and they made all kinds of different possible options, and then, you know, obviously then the board voted to make that change. So I think it's been since 2005, 2006 that this change went into effect. Sally and Carrie have both, you know, had a staff meeting with their staffs to talk about, that were starting to explore this. I asked Sally and Carrie to create a small, workable committee of parents, staff, staff people, community members, that would, you know, start to have those discussions this spring. And so it's not something that we would do for, obviously, for next school year, but the following school year certainly could be a possibility, and trying to let parents and staff know ahead of time that, you know, eventually it would come to the board for a, a decision. But again, it comes back to what's in the best interest of, of students, and, you know, there are factors that we'd have to look into, where that, where that line is drawn. If you have a, a class at Dyke Newell and you have a class at Fisher Mitchell, or the class size for that grade is, one is very high, one's low, you know, will we transport across the town? We've talked about bus service already, doesn't seem to be intermountable at all for them, probably be easier for them actually. But, you know, we haven't thought everything through at this point about what would be, you know, maybe some of the, you know, I mean, we know why they went to this and some of their rationale for it, but when it comes to staffing, it certainly has an effect on staffing as far as, if I'm teaching fourth grade now, I may not be teaching fourth grade the following year, so we have to be sensitive, you know, to that piece too. But, so we're looking through a couple of different lenses as we, as we talk about this. So we haven't really, you know, Steve made the point last week, we haven't really, the administrative team has talked a little bit about this, and at the retreat we talked a little bit, but as a board in general, we haven't really brought the topic up that we're starting to at least discuss it and explore it at, at this point.
And I think the points that have been brought up are, one, probably the biggest rationale for, for making this change is both principals talked about what a challenging transition it is from that second grade to third grade, and that for any kid, but especially kids who have particular needs or high anxiety, the principals have said, we just get used to that individual and understanding where they need help and where they need support, and all of a sudden, there's this anxiety about transitioning from one school to the big school, and they get introduced to a whole new staff that may not be as familiar with that individual. And so, which leads me to the second item that they brought up, that, you know, we've seen the model of K through five in our own district and the advantage that that presents, and there would be a great benefit to having two K through five schools in addition to what we already have in the district. So as we talk about the advantages, we also need to make sure that we consider what the potential pitfalls may be, because obviously there was a rationale why there was a change made years ago. So I'll open it up to the rest of the board if anybody wants to add anything. Kyle?
So would this mean essentially that your peer group of, would be significantly smaller if we went to having two K through five schools instead of one K through two, and then one three through five?
It would be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Steve?
Well, I think, and most of us attended the retreat, I think we all attended the retreat several, several months ago now, and, and both, as, as both Patrick and Tim have mentioned, Sally and Carrie have both mentioned concern about this transition. And I guess what, what impresses me, if, if the kids reflect concern and issues and behavioral, reflects in terms of behavioral issues that the kids bring, you can only imagine what, what the adult, what the parent is, is experiencing on the other end. So I, I think that, that we really need to take a serious look at this. I, I personally have to struggle to find any issues that would make this a negative creating a K through five, but there, but there could be issues out there that I'm, that I certainly I'm not aware of. And, and again, I think if, if, if the kid is experiencing, if the child in these situations is experiencing a certain amount of anxiety with this, with this, with this transfer from one building to the next, the anxiety among parents must be equally as high, if not, if not higher. And, and so I, I just, I think we would get good support in the community generally. I, if not, unless persuaded otherwise, I think this is really the, the direction we should go.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I was just approached this weekend from a member in the community who knew me in the past when I was teaching at Dyke Newell, and asked if this was something they was considering, and my response was, well, what do you feel about it? And it was an immediate, you know, move to, yes, I think it's a great idea, and this is why I think it's a wonderful idea. And it was, what's echoed by the administrators, and what's echoed by, I think, anybody who sees the effect of having older students in a school community and their impact on younger students, and the community that's formed within that one. So I, I, as well as anyone else, I would be a great proponent of, of seeing that transition. As a teacher in that school system, I saw myself, saw the struggles that go on from students trying to get ready for that next move, and, and I, from a teacher's perspective, I saw the two, that how hard it was to even take a program, I developed at Dyke Newell and tried to pick it up and transfer it myself to Fisher Mitchell, it just, it, it was too difficult to do that, it didn't work, and the kids kept coming to me and saying, well, where is this? You thought, I, you know, I thought we were going to have it together, well, it was... Well, it's a different school, you have to understand, it's different development there, but they were really wanting to have continuity is what I heard from them. And we see the benefits of it in West Bath and Woolwich certainly, and I, I hope that there are, any problems there are, we can address them and resolve them, and that if this is something that we can get buy-in from not just the parents, but also the, the staff, the administrators. I hope that it can be done in a good way, and hears their concerns, and is done over timeframe where everyone can kind of come through this transition together.
Anyone else? Kyle?
I did go to elementary school in the Bath area, where I did go to elementary school in Grinnell, Iowa, we had a pretty similar system where kids went through grades K through two, but in two separate schools. And one of the things that we did in Grinnell was we basically divided the town right down the middle with a highway, and kids on the north side went to Fairview, and kids on the south side went to Baywood Park. The schools each kind of had their own unique characteristics, and people gravitated towards certain teachers, certain, certain community feelings at both of the schools. How would the division in terms of geography and where students live break down, or is it just even way too early to consider that?
I think it's a good point, and I think that will be a point of discussion, you know, as we charge the two principals to, to start researching that. I know it's, you know, it's been, it was early, it was a consideration, the fact that we have choice within the district.
Right.
Might soften that somewhat, but how it would play out, it is still too early to tell, you know, where would the line be, where, you know, where would that defining line be within the community?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't know what that is yet.
But I do think, Kyle, that was a concern. When I looked through this report, that the only one I could find was they use the term geographic equalization.
Yeah.
Because I think they felt like, you know, wherever the line was drawn before, that there were some maybe cons to, you know, have, like you said, I mean, no matter what you do, two schools are going to be, you know, have their own ways about it.
Yeah.
But I think that was a piece, the diversity piece, or that equalization was a, a topic that was discussed before.
Tim? I just, I forgot to mention, Kyle just reminded us, when talking, where you went to school, that the other great example of, of having a longer grade span is, is, you know, where I went to school, which is right here at Pittsburgh. You know, that, I remember being a kid in this school system and thinking about seeing the older kids here, and it was, it definitely made that sense of what you look forward to, you know, and what are the new things coming up? You kind of already have a sense of what those are, so I didn't want to leave this wonderful school out of that.
Very brief. Since the day I arrived here, it's been an issue for me, how that happened in the first place, why it happened, and what can we do to rectify what I feel is inappropriate. And I have great confidence, I'm very pleased that it's being addressed, and being addressed in a very professional manner by our staff and our superintendent, and I look forward to hearing their report.
Anyone else?
I certainly support this, that I feel that it's too young for these kids to be making that transition. I've heard from some parents that they felt that their child pretty much lost a year, but the second year that they were in Fisher Mitchell, that they blossomed and came back. So they did gain momentum, but they lost a year. And certainly having older siblings in the same building has a great deal of support for these kids those nine hours.
Is there anyone on the board who has any reservations or concerns about this? Okay. I guess with that, we, we don't need to formally take a vote, but I get the sense from, you know, the entire board that there's support for this, and we would charge Sally and Kerry to go ahead and, and begin the process of at least researching this and figuring out what steps we would need to take to make that happen. So I think Patrick Ball's in, in their court now. Okay. Is there anything that anybody else wanted to add on that?
Can we have a copy of the document that you found? See some of the reasons behind?
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's all I can find at this point. It's, I guess I would say it's somewhat helpful. I can, I got some notes on it, but it doesn't, there's not a official recommendation in here, there's things to consider, and they, and it's advised saying, you know, we need more time to study this, and I just can't find anything else, but I can certainly send you this as.
Well, why don't you just, if you could just, if you could make it available, Central Office?
Yeah, I can send it.
Swing by Central Office.
Yeah, I just was curious because I, you know, I'm four.
Yes.
Having two separate K through five, and so I'm just curious and want, proppant and then look at those issues and see if they're still valid whatsoever.
Like one, for example, is SAB, is having all your grade two, for example, in one building, because there may not have been the consistency of curriculum or expectations when it comes to, you know, that SAB piece, and I think we've come a long way in that area. That was a big piece, and then that, you know, geographic equalization, those were two that kind of stood out to me in this report, and I can, I can scan it, we can send it out to them.
All right, move on to item twelve point O, public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Hearing none, we will move on to item thirteen point O, set next meeting date and location. We're looking at April twenty eighth at the West Bath School. And I will not be in attendance for that meeting, so we're going to turn it over to Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Vote by Bill, seconded by Kyle. All those in favor, raise your hand. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.